7:30 on March 13, 2017. I pause discussion time leaving to order. The board of commissioners has given the certificate. This is certified and reports for section 172 actual of the board director of the vote of the moderator in the board on the 150 boards required to all discussion time meeting to order is present. We have a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the following person be invited to the meeting. Elizabeth Rohr, Finance Director, Darren Klein, Town Counsel, Bill LaForme, Transcript, Carol DeGroot, Town West Staff, Mark Knoll, Polty Group, Robert Cachoe, Polty Group, Matthew Cooper, IT Director, Carolyn Katamalton, 9th Cora Street, Courtney Fulia, 22 Cheyenne Mill Lane, Gianna Mosca Rotolo, 5th Cobble's Lane, Ashley Laney, 5th Pleasant Street, Eric Tony, 7th U B Street, Danielle McKnight, 50 Ethel Street, Melrose, Francis DeCoste, 77 Franklin Street, Boston, Harold S. Miller Jr., Custodian, Debbie Carbone, Assessor, Marian McKay, Treasurer Collector, Amy Lutzwitz, Youth Services, Rob Carbone, NOR CAM, Jason Smith, NOR CAM, Andrew Laverty, DPW Director, Jonathan Eichman, Tom Counsel, Raul Schmidt, 2, Sansville Lane, John Renard, Superintendent of Schools, Marlene Stevens, Operations Director, Parks and Recreation, Sanjean Wadwa, 91 Gabriel Street, Susan Magnar, Veterans Director, Mike Murphy, Police Chief, Max Murphy, 2 Bishop's Way, Allison Kane, Performing Arts Manager.
We have a motion to adjourn. Seeing none of all those available, please say aye. Aye. Prove. unanimous. All visitors being seated. Everyone in the hall should be wearing a ribbon. Visitors wearing a black ribbon and all visitors boths wearing a teal ribbon. To tell us if this evening, if necessary, counting the front section into my right, you have silence for the center section, Marson Bailey, and for my left, Kent Hart. I'd also like to take this opportunity to thank the students on the stairs. Well, if you wish to recognize, please stand while on the table where you can get the microphone, name and address for the record. Carolyn Katamalton, I follow. Ashley Laney, Pina, Mosca Rotolo, Courtney Fulia, and Eric Tony. Thank you very much. I would also... Also, when you're speaking, there will be two microphones. Why not just with a cable TV and then why not just with the hall? So please be mindful of that. I'd also ask that everyone please shut off their cell phones so that we can allow you to drop in during the reading. At this time, I'd like to ask that I'm sure to do this all by doing it.
Aye. But the students who apply on the United States of America, the future of our foolish hands, foundation, the world, the citizens of the United States of America.
Mr. Moderator, I move to dispatch with the reading of the warrant.
I'll clarify the motion. It's attached to the reading of the warrant and the return service by the council. And we need a motion on the floor. Discussion. Seeing none of all those available, please say aye.
Aye.
Prove. unanimous. One of the housekeeping agents I've brought to mention, if you are in need of a copy of the warrant, if you could just raise your hand, someone will be now in the gathering too. If you'd like a copy of the warrant, if you'd like to go home, just raise your hand and then we do our turn. Article one. Mr. Chair.
Mr. Moderator, I move to end the motion of altering the law by law at 209, that is certified in Article one, that is pressing the law.
We have a motion as well as a lack of any recommendation. Mr. Press. Mr. Press. Moderator, if you request, can anyone leave the reading completely? And then I get the recommendation, they want to ask the presentation.
I'd like to do it after the presentation.
Okay, we'll hold out for the recommendation until after the presentation. Mr. Press has asked, the board is likely to have 10 minutes to leave the meeting, process of the presentation. Discussion. Seeing none of all those available, please say aye.
Aye.
Prove. unanimous.
Mr. Press. Thank you. And I'm sure we can do it for a bit at a time, but I don't want to go over just because we need it. I wanted to thank everyone for coming up tonight. I'm going to run through a few slides related to articles, one through four. I'm going to run just about a little bit of history just to refresh everyone's memory on what we did this evening. In December of 2015, we were purchasing tickets to stay to acquire the property for a dollar. It's been everything stuff working on with the Economic Development Committee, our RP to get on the street a bit, see what offers we can give on that project. We had our RP on the street in December of 2016. And in that RP, we added in our paragraph right from the beginning, a lot of the bidders know that town, even though it's its own or industrial office, that we were willing to consider all of the zoning options to consider people's bids, so we could get the widest range of offers. And I think that's pretty helpful. It's one of the reasons we had this evening because of that particular paragraph, which you can see in the second subtext behind me. So when November 2016, we received calls, we received our calls before there. Four of them wasn't related and one was commercial. And of course, our initial goal going into this was to try to rebuild that property for commercial use. But as you can see, the calls that we received, there really was a project only one. Unfortunately, that proposal didn't even come close to our approval. So this is what we ended up with. January, after the Economic Development did a valuation of all the calls, we made a recommendation to the board selecting on January 3rd, which they did accept that recommendation. You select 40 homes, $30 million cash offer for 454 sale, age restricted, 55 years old and older. And that's a pretty good offer for the town. The slide here shows you some of the benefits that we evaluated when we were looking at this for the town, for the long-term best interest of the town. When you look at that and you see, you know, the commission model we had escape, they presented us in that commission model, these what they call three development households tenants, which was nice, so under the commission model, it starts off 50/50, with these incentives that we can gain, we can get up to almost 70% or actually we hit up to 70%. The reason why you see a range behind me between 16 million and 19 million is if something we can have to achieve after this evening, one of the things is when we can sell the property by 4th December 4th this year, we can receive an additional 10%. If we go beyond that point, when we sell within five years, we'll get an additional 5%. So you can see that's one of the reasons why we have to range in our net proceeds for that $30 million dollars. But I feel pretty confident, I stand here in front of you today, just from the sale of 104 Old Road, we're certainly going to be in that $18 million range. I really feel confident saying that. But with that, it's going to allow us to really look at our future capital investments that we need in town, we'll see in our strategic plan. There's a lot of things sitting in our strategic plans and I've been involved for seven years. Even when Mr. Lane was on the board 10 years ago, when they walked into this entitled, how many were dressed because we can't continue with our future back to the residents' access? This now allows us to take this investment of $18, $19, $19 and reinvest it in our capital so we can do the things that we much more do, talk about senior centers in a day, or new fire stations in a day. This is really allows us to have opportunity. That's why this full warrant article, warrant article is a very important thing. And I'll just touch on one more thing. Not only can we get to spend that sale proceeds, but after five years, when 40 homes finishes the construction, they have 450 units, we're going to see revenues, an additional revenue of $30 million dollars a year. That's very substantial and that really will help us reduce some of the increases that we've seen over the past years. And we're also talking about several hundred people now moving into town, that will show in our retail stores on Route 28. We think that would be wonderful, see Route 28 now stop that a little more life to it. I would like to turn it over to our town chairman, Danielle McKnight, who will give you some now details on the warrant articles, one and four.
Article one, changes to the existing residential multifamily zoning district. There are several areas in town that allow multifamily housing and we want to be clear that the new area on Lowell Road is in a separate zone with different rules from what is already allowed in other locations. The town already has a district called Residential Multifamily and is located at 113 Carroll Street. This district has a corresponding section in the zoning law with its own rules for things like height and green space. The new multifamily overlay zone on Lowell Road will be a different zone with a different set of regulations. This article makes clear in the zoning code that these districts are separate and each have their own set of rules. For Article two, this creates a new multifamily zoning overlay on the former Berry property and surrounding properties that are also zoned industrial office. This amendment would allow multifamily housing development while also keeping all the uses that are already permitted today. The properties affected by the zoning overlay are the following. 104 Lowell Road, one location proposed full time. 102 Lowell Road. That's the parcel of the project. 102 Lowell Road, which is a smaller parcel that was also part of the former Berry site and which the town currently has for sale. 100 Lowell Road, which is the site of the Edgewood Apartments, to which no actual change in use or new development is proposed. 96 3-year-old Road. Which is the site of the town water facility and likewise, no actual change in use or new development is proposed on that property. And 96 Lowell Road, which is Rita Mullin Park, again, to which no actual change or development is proposed and which has deed restriction for recreation. The reason for including this property in this zoning is simply its location within the existing cluster of industrial office properties surrounding 104 Lowell Road. Like all town parks, this one uses the zoning of its surrounding properties and doesn't have its own recreation or park zone. No matter how the park is zoned, it can't be developed into housing or anything else without another town needing a special legislation. The town has no plans to allow residential development on the park property. Some other aspects of the new multifamily zoning overlay are the distance between buildings would be similar to the design of the Edgewood Apartments. And normally, parkland spaces must be 10 feet by 20 feet. And in this overlay, outdoor parkland spaces must still be 10 by 20, but indoor garage spaces can be 9 by 18. And as is the case throughout most of the rest of town, two parkland spaces per unit will be required. Article three, changes to the industrial office zoning district. These are changes that have previously been discussed by the CPC as priorities for industrial office. The CPC believes the entire industrial office zone could benefit from them, so they are the latest changes to the whole industrial office district and not just the new overlay. And they are raising the minimum building height from 50 feet to 60 feet, helping to define the height limits of underground parking, both employees and in heat, and allowing for more variety in the size of commercial spaces. Right now, small retail spaces are not allowed. This article will change. Currently, the threshold is 50,000 square feet. You can't have a retail space that is smaller than that. And Article four, this is a change to our reuse and definitions section. This is a story in the zoning code. Overlays can be more restrictive or they can be less restrictive, allowing additional uses that are otherwise not permitted. The sentence crossed out in the warrant article is being eliminated because it's not consistent with the rest of our zoning code and it doesn't reflect the reality of what an overlay district actually is supposed to be. And this article would ensure that all of our zoning overlay districts, including the one being introduced tonight, can be fully used as intended.
Mr. Press.
We did that under ten minutes.
We did. Very good. We would like to wish to make a recommendation.
Board of selectmen, unanimous on recommend.
Community planning commission. Community planning commission recommend. This is the finance committee wishing to make a recommendation.
The finance committee recommends as well. And I would also like to take this opportunity to thank those members of various boards that have been so active in bringing this project to this point.
Discussion. Seeing none of all those available, please say aye. If you wish to be recognized, please stand so that they can bring in the microphones and address for the record.
Christine Beduris, 30, Northridge. How many buildings are you proposing and are they going to be six-story buildings? All right. How many buildings will there be and are they six-story buildings?
Mr. Press. So it's going to be nine buildings with 15 units in each building. And they have to be... Four stories.
Has a study been done on the traffic on that road?
That's one of the things they're going to be doing due diligence, but they've already done some initial, they already met with the meets last week. And all the data shows based on this type of use, should have a real impact at the end of all. That's one of the concerns, we have to do all of the calls of submit and that's why we have to do the review of all the...
Thank you very much. Carol McGillicuddy, 16 Marblehead Street. So this is going to be over 55 and I'm wondering if there's a percentage of this is going to be considered affordable?
Mr. Press.
Mr. Moderator. No. So it would not be affordable. No plausible objection to this at the end of all.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not agreeing with that.
Joyce Longo, 18, Ridgeway Road. There was one piece on the map that dealt with the, I believe, with the town, well, area. I remember when I went to the couple of meetings on connecting to the new system area. It was highly recommended that we not give up our right to have it up. Is there anything in this plan, even though we don't plan to maintain the usual areas for water supply, would anything be qualified that if in the future, would we be able to do it as separate as the other segments, the area or, you know, would they not, no longer be too, take one of the areas?
Mr. Press.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So that particular area we're talking about is we're still staying in the retention of the town. We're going to still own that. And we want to have easement help to that property and access to it if needed. But we're, the system, allegedly is going to be completely on the opposite side of that, so we don't, there are causes that are going to be located outside of that. There is no way they can affect those waters. It's probably a system that everybody in a package plant and they're going to be renewing D E B on the earth and they've got to have the process. It's a very sophisticated plan, very simple for areas like this, schools right now. So this is all going to be owned through D E B, all going to get approved, the water's all going to get protected, the legal is all set, they have to put them on transit and all our waterways will be protected when this project is all finished. They're going to have to get the right safety in place, building structures in their waterways and their recreation areas, with all that and on the right steps, I'm sure. Do you want to add anything else?
Mr. Press.
That is the sum too, but that's all been taken into account, the treatment that's going in will create a tertiary quality of water, which is almost clean without falling. And so basically, what we're putting in the water is so clean that by the time it goes to any amount of filtration through the soil, it would never affect any of the waters or our wells.
Mr. McGrath.
Edwin McGrath, 8 Lowell Road. Question on the proceeds. Mr. Prisco's talking upwards of the ballpark of $18 million. Is it the intent that this is going to be used for capital infrastructure or is it earmarked for restricted, earmarked or restricted, I'm not sure what the right phrase, or that decision been made or what's going on, you know, because that seems to be a big selling point.
I have an answer for you, but I'm going to let our resident management check first.
Mr. Press.
Sale of town on land has to go into a receipt reserve fund called Sale of Town on Land and it can only be used for specific purposes. So it can be used to offset our debt service budget for items that have a greater life of 20 years that have been awarded for 20 years or longer, or it can be used for capital items. So it's, we can't just, you know, appropriate it towards the operating budget anyway.
Further discussion. We've got one of the battles on our heart.
Amy Char, 24 Fifth Fifth Tower. How do we expect this to be tracked out for police and fire department?
Mr. Press. So it's a very good question and it's one that we had concern about from day one. And we have met, I've met the White Department. I've met with the chief several times, I've met with the town administrator on the subject. The board is well aware of it. You know, before this project even went into place, we knew that we had a challenge on that side of town. About 70% of our calls go to that side of town and we've already done some previous studies in the past that have said that we probably have to build some type of road site on that area. Maybe leave a fire truck in the end, in the end. So this actually helps us achieve some kind of solution to that problem. How we're going to actually have, when I talk about proceeds and how we can use those proceeds to invest in the capital needs, this is one area we have to evaluate and come up with a solution over the next five to six years. So by the time that's fully all built up, this subject's going to get addressed, we're going to have an answer to that question. Until we have the money, we can't really decide what we're going to do because we have to finish tonight, we have to get these warrants approved, get through the process, complete the sale, and then that discussion, we're going to come up with a definitive answer. But yes, there is plans, we've already started working on them and hopefully you guys will prove these warrants against tonight, we will have an ability to do something about it. It won't go unaddressed.
Ms. Fillmore.
Pat Fillmore, 24 Field, Chris Terrace. That was one of my questions, police, fire, DPW, maintenance of the area. But now you're talking 450, age restricted, 55 and older, a little bit younger than I am. And if I'm going to downsize, I'm not going to go into a townhouse in the town that I love and pay $450,000 or above to go into these things. So if these things don't sell, then what happens? Do they're just vacant houses, vacant townhouses that are just going to, or are you going to open it up? I mean, if it's not 40B, how many people are going to be able to afford these?
Mr. Press.
Yeah, the people that do the building of these things do their homework, you know, because they wouldn't be proposing to build this if they hadn't already identified a very strong market. And I think they've done that, so it's unlikely that they go empty. We can't pull up that about Edgewood when we built that, it'll fill right up, so I think it were in, I think we're in good shape on that.
But Warren, Edgewater's a totally different ballgame because that's 40B. Part of it's 40B.
Right. They still do their homework, they still identify the market, I mean, they would have been building this if they hadn't identified the fact that it was a market for it.
Okay, again, back to my question then. If you're saying they're going to sell, if they don't, what happens?
Mr. Press.
If you can't surprise, they pay for own property and they would be, they're the ones making the investment and they're the ones that are going to have to live with whether they sell or not. What we're doing is we're putting the right protection in place to protect the town. In this particular case, we're going to have a deed restriction in there, so if they're not selling 55 and older, that doesn't mean they can change their mind, it doesn't mean they can let out and exploit some younger than that. We are putting the deed restriction right in place, so this will stay 55 and older forever. They don't have a choice and they have to make it. And that's, as I said, the least people that do this job every day, they would put $30 million on this piece of property if they didn't think it was going to work. So, you know, I don't have a crystal ball or anything, but I think this is a good deal. I think this is a, there really is no risk on the town and if they're making, I'm sure they're going to work on advising or they get their right points in place so they can complete their sales of 450 units. I have high confidence in that. Whether they do it or not, the town is doing the right thing, they're putting the right, putting the right protections in so they can't change their mind or try to be susceptible to the property in the future.
Ma'am, ma'am, on my right here.
Yes, my name is Willy Brown and I'm on 30 Southwood Road. I was just wondering, what is the population right now of Edgewood apartments? Approximately.
Mr. Press.
No one really knows it really is that, but you asked me how many apartments are in there?
No, I'm just saying, all right, how many apartments?
There's 420. 406.
406. So that's 800 plus children. Now you're going to add another 900 people if they're spousal come with them. And I think if a car, those two coffee places, does Willy can have any idea, we're going to be having that cross section right there? I can't imagine it's not going to have some sort of traffic problem. Are we going to have to spend the $18 million to do road improvements down in that area?
Mr. Press.
Mr. Moderator. So again, through the due diligence process that Polty has to go through, this is one of the things they have to do. So again, through the due diligence process that hopefully has to go through, this is one of the things they have to provide. If they're going to do this traffic study, the neighbor's going to be involved in it through them all the way through. So the data will show, they're going to have to present that to us.
So they're the inspector?
They're going to have the responsibility to show us that the road, the way it's constructed today, if there's any improvements that have to be done, they're going to be done. But right now, the way it looks, this type of use will not have the heavy use if you had a big commercial property over there where you had a lot of in and out. You had like a marketplace over there. Yes, you would have a significant amount of traffic on, on that property. In this particular use, you typically don't see a lot of people leave until about eight-thirty or nine o'clock in the morning. And you typically see people come back by three or four in the afternoon. That's the type of use you see. You don't get that early morning with rough traffic. You don't get that late evening, you come home at work.
But it's a direct feed and I agree. I find it's very heavy traffic. If they'll be doing concrete street or they'll use sixty-two, because it will not have seen ninety-three in anything that you do.
Mr. Pierce, they're going to head that way. See if they're still working. However, this process will have to go through the planning board. There's a process by which we look at all those different items. But what tonight's task is to get the zoning in place so that we can even entertain the sale. Because if we don't do that, we can't entertain the sale. If we entertain the sale, then they have to come forward to the planning board and we will address all of those issues. Things like, you know, traffic and, and such.
So you, you protect the townspeople for the infrastructure and fire and the road better than the road?
Yes, ma'am, we invest, we can for many years.
No, I don't know. Thank you.
Mr. Reed.
Bill Reed, Seventeen Grand U Road. I'm left wondering if we're going to be tied into M W R A by the time this project comes online. Because I don't care if you put the septic system on the other side of town. You strip that piece of property of all its trees, it's going to affect the water that we tap from that well.
Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Moderator. So June two thousand nineteen, we're going to be turning on M W R A water. The construction of this, the first building may be built under the existing water structure. But by the time, I think the second or the third building is built, we'll already be tied into M W R A. And then this is supposed to take about five years, I believe. Five, five years to have it completely built up. It will be under M W R A right before that.
And are there plans in place to turn off that well?
Mr. Moderator. I'm sorry.
Is, are there plans in place to turn off the well?
We, we are turning off our wells. I don't believe we're going to, we're going to turn them off and we're going to, we're going to have secondary connection through and over as our emergency backup. And then the wells will always exist. I don't believe we're going to maintain them. We're going to definitely keep them in place so if we ever need them in the future. But right now, our backup plan is to connect through our existing and over connection for emergency backup.
Mr. Capazudo.
Hey, I'm on the book, Rhonda Capazudo, Twelve Twenty Drive. I've been in this town for twenty-six years and I just continue to wonder why we do not seek more commercial options when land becomes available. We put the garden, we continue to put the garden on the residential tax bill. I do not think this is the way to go.
Mr. Prisco.
So as I said in my presentation, our initial goal going in was to redevelop this for commercial use. We normally disagree with you, but you saw the proposals that came back, four of them out of the pie for residential. We can't force people to bid on something they don't want. This particular area is just not conducive for that commercial. But one of the things that we plan to do is we're going to take some of the proceeds here in this investment and we're going to at least now study the concrete street. And our goal hopefully is to soar for our concrete street. And to redevelop that for our, for our commercial base. And what you'll see from this is you're going to see Route twenty-eight starting to get better and starting to have more customers going into our stores and our restaurants on Route twenty-eight. You're going to see more commercial coming in along twenty-eight, you'll see it improve.
Mr. Capazudo.
I understand that and I've also been caring about the renovation of Route twenty-eight for probably fifty years. Used to come up to Route twenty-eight to go to Kitty's Restaurant when I was junior in high school. That was a big deal, Kitty's. Route twenty-eight in North Redding has not changed in fifty years. I get the wisdom, I would love to change. I would love to.
We all do, we all want to change.
I would love to look great. However, I still believe that we're taking the easy way out. That we are not aggressively seeking commercial edge drive in North Redding.
Further discussion.
Hold on, Mr. Loffler. Yeah.
June Story, Ten Southwood Road. I'd like you to clarify a little bit for me. I'm not really casting stones here. We all know it will impact our police, it will impact our, it will impact traffic. I can take Little Southwood Road, fifty years of living here. Oh, we're going to put the road through it, it won't impact your traffic. We now have a speedway. So I'd rather you just be honest and say, yes, this will impact us. It is going to impact traffic. I traveled that road and you know that however many units you put in there, there will be a traffic impact. The other thing I'd like to, I, I just don't know the rules in this. Why is there not some affordable housing? And in our town, what do we do for affordable housing? I, I'm just not aware of what it is.
Mr. Prisco.
Mr. Moderator. So we take the roads first. I don't think anybody in this room will disagree with you that there'll be some impact. There will be. But I believe we have the processes in place, we have the right protocol in place, and we're reviewing these plans to make sure that the impact is as little as it can be. There definitely be an impact. And hopefully with the proceeds from this, we'll be able to address the issues that we have with the yoga bird use of our lease and our fight amendments today. And if you want to tour that fight amendment, you're welcome to. By the time chief warning, we'll open the doors for you, see it, it needs to be addressed. We agree. This gives us our best chance to finally come up with a long-term solution, a twenty-first century solution for our fight amendment. And then give the ability for the police department to expand it where they are now.
And this will all impact our tax bills.
Sorry?
And it will all impact our tax bills, such as sewage, such as the water. I mean, I think we, we all need it and, and we understand that. But I think it would be great if you could say, yes, this has a direct impact.
Well, I won't say we'll have a direct financial impact on the current residents today because with the eighteen million dollars roughly, or sixteen million dollars, my hope is that we do the right things with the investments of that money that will pay for these types of capital investments we want to make. That would be the ultimate goal. And again, once we get through this process, we have those funds, we work with our income, we work with our finance director, the town administrator, the board of selectmen to make sure that we come up with a solution that we can afford through using these proceeds. That would be the ultimate goal. When we talk about soaring concrete street, there has to be some initial investment in the town funds. The bet is paid for that. The property owners that are on concrete street today will pay for the installation of any storage that's on concrete street. We're not soaring anywhere else in the town. That's not the goal. Concrete street needs storage. Or we'll, we'll stay the way it is today or ever and we'll never be able to reset our commercial base. And then affordable, I will let Mr. Pierce answer.
Mr. Pierce, on the affordable housing issue.
Yeah, we, we've done really well. We, and I think we, we've passed our ten percent, we have our ten percent affordable housing. When we put in the Edgewater property, we were pretty close. Although we've had a little bit of growth in our housing stock now, so we're, we're always slightly behind. So if the stakes remain at the ten percent, we're pretty close.
Mr. McHann.
I also just want to mention that the C P C is currently working with a housing consultant, a grant-funded project to create our town's first affordable housing production plan. So we're currently working on that right now and we expect to have that project wrapped up in June. We really hope to, to come out of that process with some good ideas for new affordable housing creation.
Mr. Loffler.
Just along the eighty, eighty-five road. I've heard a lot of concerns about fire and, and traffic. I'm just wondering, I, I, my question may not apply to this particular article, but when this development goes in, is there any way to impose upon the developer any changes that might need to take place on, on the roads in terms of egress and entrance? And then with the fire, I, I had heard some talk a while back about larger developments like this being required to have a sprinkler system installed in the building. So I don't, I didn't know if any of our building codes on this particular piece of property where there's going to be, you know, four stories, quite a few buildings, instead of having to look at the option of a satellite fire department, is it possible to impose on, on these dwellings better safe, fire safety, such as a sprinkler system? And if we do that upfront so that the developer knows he has to include that at his cost, you know, in terms of, say, I'm only using it as an example, it's something that might be done, a sprinkler system and road enhancements, is that, I don't know where that would take place. I don't know if it has to be somehow referenced in, in these or if that's under, when we go for a building program or something.
Mr. Prisco. So the builder is going to be required to put the sprinklers systems. Okay, there will be sprinklers systems installed in this. And I'm going to let Mr. Pierce address the roads.
Mr. Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Basically, it's going to go through the process, the planning process and, and they will do, as, as Mr. Prisco mentioned before, traffic study. Until we have all of that information, it's pretty hard for me to tell you exactly what they're going to, how they're going to do. But they will have to create a safety level and, and the rules and regulations, we have to make sure of that. So again, tonight we need to get our zoning in place so that we can actually make this deal. And then they've got to come to the table and show us what they're going to do and then we'll look at the impacts of what they're going to do and see what kind of remediation is necessary. Thank you.
Mr. Van Etten.
Jerry Van Etten, I'm from Grand Road. With Mike Prisco and CPC, I'm telling you, this was state-owned land. It was through the initiative of the board of selectmen, the town administrator, the CPC, that we find ourselves in this position to make this deal. I think this, and all the things that have been raised are good questions and I'm sure they're going to be dealt with. But this is a huge windfall for the town in North Redding. I think the CPC, the board of selectmen, the town administrator deserve all the credit in the world. We could be sitting here not entitled to one cent or one dollar for this land and possibly dealing with something that was escaped, was going to go up, but we have little and no control. So I appreciate the concerns by everybody, but they need to be applauded, and Representative Greg Jones as well.
Mr. Prisco. As I said in my presentation, this developer will bring in over three million dollars in new tax collections every year going forward after the five years are all built up. So as soon as the first units are built and they start selling, that's instant tax revenues that we don't have today. So I think you have to take into mind, yes, there's going to be some expenses potentially, but we're going to have the revenues now to pay for those expenses. And it doesn't have to come off the backs of our current residents.
Yes.
Denise Medico, Twenty-Ninth Boroughs Road, move to question.
Motion, move to the question. Discussion on that? Seeing none of those favorable to the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote unanimous? Come in. I don't know how the main motion is on, on the floor. Did I get the recommendation?
You did.
I did. No, we did. Who's white? Okay, on the main motion, I will need a two-thirds vote. I can declare, by town meeting by law, town meeting rules, I can declare a two-thirds vote. If I'm uncertain, I will do a hand count. All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carries. Article two, Mr. Pierce.
Mr. Moderator. I move to amend the code of the town in North Redding Consulting Bylaws. I add new article twenty-five, multiple housing, whole way district, and I specify in Article two, as we can do on.
We have the motion, this board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation. Mr. Prisco.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
CPC, Mr. Pierce.
Mr. Moderator. Community land condition unanimously recommends. The Finance Committee, Mr. Swilber.
The Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
Discussion. Seeing none of the vote on the motion, this two requires a two-thirds vote. I can't declare the vote, take a hand count if I'm concerned. All those who favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote.
No.
I declare a two-thirds vote. Motion carries, Article three, Mr. Pierce.
Mr. Moderator. I move to amend the code of operating both bylaws, section two hundred, Act forty, as specified in Article three, as predicted in the law.
The motion, this board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation. Mr. Prisco.
Board of Selectmen, unanimously recommends.
The CPC, Mr. Pierce.
Community land condition unanimously recommends. The Finance Committee, Mr. Swilber.
Finance Committee unanimously recommends.
Discussion.
Mr. Lee.
I'm just curious.
All right. No. No cheating.
Bill, Bill Reed.
It's cool.
Seventeen Grand U Road. Just curious, why sixty feet? What's magic about sixty? What can they do with sixty feet that they can't do with fifty?
Ms. McHann.
The sixty-foot height was the height that we were advised by the developer as to what was needed for, for the particular development. Previously, the CPC had discussed raising the height limit in industrial office anyway. They had actually talked about going up quite a bit higher than that, but we felt that sixty feet was really all we needed right now for this particular project. And then if we ever wanted to revisit that in the future, we could. But that was the reason for, for that, for accommodating a four-story building with parking underneath.
Ma'am.
Ma'am, this is Eric Seven Eisenhower. I just want to point out on the power plate says minimum billion.
I was trying to get the line rate. It's supposed to say maximum. My apologies. We, we talked about changing that slide about ten times.
You wanted to know if people know they're ready, gentlemen. Who was paying attention? They caught you.
No, we caught it too. We just didn't fix it, so they think they're breaking up.
Further discussion. This zoning article also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Unanimous. Article four, Mr. Pierce.
Mr. Moderator. I move to amend the code of operating consulting bylaws, section 200, Act 40, as specified in Article four, as presented in the law.
We have the motion, this board of selectmen wish to make your recommendation. Mr. Frisco.
Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends.
The CPC, Mr. Pierce.
Community planning condition unanimously recommends.
The finance committee, Mr. Swilber.
Finance committee unanimously recommends.
Discussion. This also requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Unanimous. Article... Mr. Frisco.
Just one second. I know you've heard a lot of thank yous tonight, but I just want to special thank you to my EDC members that are here tonight. Thank you, I won't have to stand up and embarrass you, but thank you very much. And a special thank you to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They gave us a profit for a dollar, like Mr. Vannett was talking about. It's a big opportunity for the town. Brad, I want to thank you and Bruce Tark. And we started out our meeting in Bruce's office, and here we are today, and we want to thank you for that.[708.12][708.12](Applause). I appreciate you. Thank you.
Article five, Mr. Weller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This one here might be a little bit... Yes, but that's okay. But again, and I also want to acknowledge Representative Jones, and his efforts, and achieving very property, and obviously bringing this to fruition, and the developers are their interest in the property, providing us with an opportunity to assist in, perhaps some tax relief, or anything else here.
Article five. To appropriate funding for destruction of facilities in Arthur Jay Kenny Field, Mr. Moderator, I move to appropriate $50,000 in free cash for the continued design of facilities in the Arthur Jay Kenny Field, including but not limited to other restrooms, including any costs incidental related thereto. And the board of selectmen has authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project as specified in Article five, as presented in the law. We have the motion, this board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation. Mr. Weller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The board of selectmen recommends this article on a vote of four to one.
The finance committee wishes to make a recommendation. Mr. Swilber.
Finance committee is voted four in favor to oppose to this article.
For the school committee, Mr. Al.
School committee unanimously recommends.
Mr. Weller.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We'd like to leave the meeting for five minutes for the purposes of a presentation by the athletic facilities subcommittee, which was charged with the responsibility of looking at the proposed project.
And if I should within the five minutes, you do not need a vote on this.
Potentially an additional five minutes, we don't want to lose.
So I'll say leave the meeting for 10 minutes, Mr. Webster, indicating that it was all of the five-minute presentation. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, 10 minutes leave the meeting for the purposes of a presentation from the subcommittee. All those in favor, please say aye. Vote. Mr. Webster, you have a vote.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just quick history, the athletic facilities committee was established last year. Our first charge was to quit irrigation and sod at the two new fields at the high school project. We did that without raising one cent from the town. We raised more than $125,000 through donations, through generous citizens, and sports leagues, and businesses. And I just want to thank all those people who actually donated to the project because it wouldn't have done, and it was our goal to not use one cent from the town for that project, and it's completed, and we'll be using those fields in the spring season. As far as the restrooms go, they looked at our committee makeup, which was school personnel, citizens, business owners, a few people from some of the leagues in town, representative from the board of selectmen, and we also have a couple of non-voting members from the finance committee, and they said, let's drop this item on their lap. So we took control of this item. Brief history, when the turf field was completed seven or eight years ago, we initially were told we had to put in a new bathroom facility, because there were new state laws that require bathroom facilities. And that would be based on the capacity of the bleachers. At that time, we were told that we had to put in 26 fixtures, 13 women's, 13 men's. Fortunately, our town building inspector, our town plumbing inspector, we all got together, we said, we don't have any money to do this, it's going to cost us a fortune. They went in, we got a waiver, because one, the facility was basically the same size as it was before, and we're going to be using it for the same thing. Two, the high school was right there, and I believe it was within 300 feet of the facility, so we could use that as our restrooms. Fast forward about five years, obviously the high school's gone. We've put a new building in that area, the team room. We need bathrooms to comply with the state. Again, working with our building inspector, working with health inspector, plumbing inspector, state plumbing inspector, we were able to get a waiver again. Plus, we were able to get a reduction in the number of fixtures we need, from 26 to 13. Eight stalls for the women's room, two stalls for the men's room, three urinals for the men's room. I know you really like all these details, but I think it's important. As I mentioned, it's really gravy in the opening act for recreational marijuana. But anyway. So that's where we stand today. At June town meeting last year, $50,000 appropriated to hire an engineering firm to come in and work with us to develop plans. We've been working with them since approximately mid to late July. We've looked at a number of different options, including retrofitting the current team room, which currently has two locker rooms, a referees' room, and two storage spaces on each side of that building. At the initial proposal, when the initial proposals came in in October, retrofitting the team room was the lowest-cost proposal. My guess is, I'm quite certain that that proposal would be more expensive today, because every proposal we got in October has increased probably 10, 15, 20% since October. That said, the school committee in good conscience, and school administration in good conscience, cannot recommend going into a two-year-old building and tearing it up to put bathrooms on each side of that building. One, it wasn't built for that purpose, and two, I don't know how many of you would build a house, and two years later, basically, when it's going to tear the whole thing up, it's starting over again. So the school committee, that's a school building, and the school committee has voted unanimously to not support that project for that building. And in good conscience, I can't see us doing a report, also CDI engineering, the company we used for this project, recommending against it. And the architect, it was a school project, basically said, I don't understand why you would go into a two-year-old building and tear it up to put bathrooms in there. Why don't you just build a new building for bathrooms? So that's where we stand today. There's a couple of... In January, we had a cost for a building that would go where the current concession stand is, concession stand would be torn down, and the cost was $565,741. When we selected that project, they came back to us in February, excuse me, early March, and that became a $652,000 project. There was an additional $60,000 for site work, and an additional $40,000 for the prefab building. The committee looked at that in good conscience, and we said, we don't want to bring that number to the town, we think it's too high. So part of that $652,000 is approximately $50,000 to put the project out to bid. Either way, you're going to have to put the project out to bid. So the decision by the athletic facilities committee on a 7-1 vote was to come here tonight, ask for the $50,000, ask for the selectmen, to ask for $50,000 to put it out to bid, so we can come forward with a true number in June as to what this project will cost. With our bids in hand, we know what it'll cost. I should also mention that the town administrator has recommended that $450,000 in free cash be applied to this project, with a $1.6 million we have in free cash. So if I, you can see, the team room, the team room is up there, where the current concession stand is, that's the current concession stand. The concession stand will be torn down, there are no current plans for a new concession stand, we're going to make some interim plans with the groups that use the concession stand, we're going to work with the town health inspector, and building inspector, and anybody else we need to work with to find out what we can sell there. There's potential for getting food trucks, getting a portion of a food truck cell, a portion of a crop, there's a lot of opportunities, a lot of options. Long-term, we want a concession stand there, but I can tell you that in our meetings, there has not once been discussion about more town funds to build a concession stand. This town's very generous, we raised over $125,000 for that field project, and I'm quite convinced that Clarkson Rec and other groups in town, if they put their minds to it, would be able to raise funds for new concessions stand. So this shows you that, the restrooms, eight stalls on one side, including one handicap stall for the women, and then you see there's two sinks, and two sinks on the men's side, with three urinals and two stalls. And as I mentioned, we voted on our 3/7 meeting, 7-1, to come forward and ask for the $50,000. Again, that $50,000 is going to have to be spent to put this project out to bid either way, build a complete design of the project, and it will get us to a point of putting the project out to bid. We felt that coming here tonight, we would probably come here tonight and ask for $700,000. Nobody felt comfortable during that. I can tell you one thing we learned, small building projects are a bigger hassle for contractors than large building projects, because they have to do almost all the same thing they do for big project, all the staging, all the equipment, it's just in a media fashion, but they're a lot more expensive than we had expected going in. Bottom line, we have to continue to show progress to get in a restroom facility there, or at some point, our waiver's going to disappear, and without what, restrooms, the field at some point will be closed if we don't put a restroom facility there. Thank you.
Even as Mr. Sec, it's a good call, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To add to Mel's point, I think what's important to understand is, you know, if you look at the complex today, as you didn't want it was just a couple of years ago, when the high school was standing there, we now have a virtual complex, and we have your turf field, which is used for football and soccer, and the baseball field right there, we have a new softball field, and an athletics field, and then lacrosse and soccer also. So what we're looking for here for the understanding of our facility, which meets the state code, which we have a mandate to fill, so that as we looked at the retrofitting of the team room, again, based upon from the school administration, school administration and people wanting to use it on a regular basis, retrofitting, and this is blowing up a two-year-old building, didn't seem to make a lot of sense. Laura Williams, who's our architect, or architect for the school project, that looked at it, first we added front on retrofitting the facility. Yes, it may be the cheapest option several months ago, but again, those were just schematic designs. We technically, the subcommittee decided to take a look at what's in school, we took this position, and we had input from the school administration, that would not work best to suit the needs of the facility long-term, that it was not necessarily a viable option. So I think there will be some discussion in relation to why not go the cheapest route. We're looking at a facility that's going to serve this community for several generations, maybe the complex, which has not been developed, which wasn't there previously. So for us, it's important to take a look at the, I think, the seven different iterations is to look for design and plans, and we had that on this particular facility, in this particular location, it needs, you know, a vote. The concession stand, as there's that, it wouldn't get, but it's served us probably 35 years now, at this particular point. We're talking about facilities that have served us for two or three generations. So for us, it's very important for the proposed project, that we meet our needs, and not just some of the cheapest exit, but meet the needs of the facility, of the facility, we think this is the best approach. In light of our plan, we're coming to we tonight and ask for a little construction funding, based upon this, the current level, we believe that the architect, the people that have this for us, is taking a very conservative approach. We're extremely hopeful that if we go to bid, which while we're asking for money to bring the design plans to the state, we can go to bid, we're hopeful that the project will come in and match. We use price and aspect of the project. And that, the subcommittee and the ones that have been feeling much more comfortable coming before town meeting in June, with the real number, it's always going to pass to me that means. Thank you.
Mr. Yul.
Thank you, Marley. Good evening. I am the minority vote on this issue, and I just want to say that, thank you first of all for everyone being here, because this is a very important meeting to the town. I think it's important for us to understand that many of the committees, you know, work together to create solutions for the town that ought to be cost-effective, functional, and serve the community as best as it can. I think you see that in the prior articles, 1 through 4, where you see that the committees worked together, and the end result was $18 million, $19 million to the town. So that's what happens when we work together. I would like to, if you'd leave, Haraway, I would like to have leave of the meeting for 10 minutes, to make a, I want to make a pause for a minute, to comment motion.
You want to leave the meeting for purposes of a presentation, Mr. Yul?
That's correct.
Mr. Yul has requested 10 minutes of leaving the meeting for... Make the motion first, and then answer the question.
I would like to make an amended motion to the current motion, is that I move to amend the motion for one article five to read as follows, to appropriate the sum of $50,000 in free cash for the design, construction, reconstruction, and remodeling of the existing team building and new storage structure at the Arthur Jay Kenny Field, including, not limited to, public restrooms, and any costs incidental or related thereto. I'll leave a second of that.
We have an amendment to the motion. Does the board of selectmen wish to make a recommendation on the amendment at this time?
Although for the one, the board of selectmen does not recommend the amendment, according to the original item.
Does the finance committee wish to make a recommendation on the amendment at this time?
Mr. Swilber.
The finance committee does not wish to make a recommendation at this time.
Does the school committee wish to make a recommendation at this time?
Mr. Al.
School committee has voted unanimously to not modify the existing team building. The school committee has ordered unanimously to not modify the existing team building, and we have taken into account the recommendations of our, uh, architect for that building, who advised not to move it, not, not to make modifications to it, and that so doing would cause significant difference. I'm a registered professional. I've been here, I'm also chairman of the school committee, and I'm the secondary school building committee throughout the process project. Uh, the, in addition to that, I happen to visit the site throughout the construction, and during that time, I, I observed the construction of that, that building. And I personally do not recommend making any modifications to it.
Mr. Yul.
Thank you very much, Marvin. Yes, uh, there have been many discussions here about your class.
Mr. Yul, before you get too far ahead of yourself. This is going to take 10 minutes?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Probably, probably 7 minutes.
Mr. Yul has asked for 10-minute leave of the meeting for purposes of the presentation. All those in favor of 10-minute leave of the meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Motion carries. Mr. Yul, you have 10 minutes.
Thank you very much. Behind me, you can see that, uh, supporting points to the amended, my amendment to the current motion. The big issue here is, you know, is that the functional facility will be the area of use. Back on October the 17th, we had a meeting prior to October, of which we discussed many options. There were options A through E, and, um, at the time, option B was the lowest cost, $435,000, and option E was one of the more expensive options, because it was a standalone structure, excuse me. There's an awful lot of discussion. Call me, call me Marco Rubio. But there have been many discussions by the committee, and I appreciate the hard work that they, they have done. I just think that the, the path that was taken was the, the wrong path to take. They had an option to build a structure. It was, um, recommended by the, uh, current company that they had at the time, that, uh, to do the option. At that time, at that, prior to the October town meeting, the FinCom voted in favor of the, uh, option B, which option B, uh, yeah, option B, which was the, um, extension of the, renovating of the locker rooms. The school committee, as they mentioned, voted against it. The primary issue was at the time by the school building committee, was that they didn't want, it was a new building, and that new building, uh, they didn't wish to have it renovated, as Mel says. Why would you renovate a new building? The reason why you would renovate a building under these circumstances is because it's more cost-effective. The plumbing is there, the electricity is there, the walls are there. You have everything that they need. All you have to do is remodel it and add to it. So it becomes much cost-effect, more cost-effective. If, as they say, the expenses and the cost of these things have increased, or these proposals have increased, they're saying that the, uh, uh, cost for the, uh, for locker rooms, that would increase. In other words, it would be $435,000. But all of them increased, and all of them are exponentially increasing. And so that becomes, uh, an, an issue that becomes moot because they're all moving up. So the question is, you know, can we have a cost-effective structure that serves the community as needed, and on a need basis, not on a want basis? And remember, we should all be working together, the school committee, the FinCom, the board of selectmen, CPC. We work together, we find out what's the best way to go. You take, always take into consideration the cost. The cost indifference right now, as you can see behind me, is 217 plus, uh, million, a thousand dollars. So it's an unnecessary expense at that point, whether you can do it for $435,000. The structure itself was satisfied the same needs that any infrastructure would do. The best use, uh, uh, I think, there's the best use of the established structure, there's the best use of the building, the utilities, because they're still in there. There's the best use of the site utilities, because they're all underground, and they're there. We don't need to add any, uh, any, uh, equipment to it. It's easy access, uh, for, from the turf field reaches. There's easy access by the baseball fields, easy access for the softball fields, uh, and the primary beneficiary of all these are the students, because they get to use these facilities. Don't need a new lift pump, no forced main for the sidewalk, no new, new, um, structurally sound, uh, subsolo conditions. A standalone structure would be more expensive, because you have to, and creating plumbing, creating electricity, and, um, build a whole new structure, therefore it becomes more expensive. The important thing is that if we approve my amendment, it still shows to the state that we're moving in a direction to try to find the most cost-effective way to, uh, uh, meet, meet a need, and, and that's, that's the most important thing. We have to meet Now, if you all, there have been issues and discussions on whether to add slab to the proposal, whether to add, um, a snack shack to it, now they're currently off the table as we speak. It's not part of this proposal. But it's, but it's, there is potential. Now, if we look at the back of, of page 2, there's a view of what, or there's a citizens' checklist for town meeting. And if you look at, I'm at 6, the question is, is it a foot-in-the-door proposition? In other words, will it lead to additional costs to the town that are not being presented as we speak right now? Because somewhere down the road, someone may say that, hey, they were going to put a slab there, why don't we do it? And then they say, well, now that we're going to do that, why don't we put a snack shack? That concerns me, because as you go down the road, many times you find, sometimes there's intent, and people who look back as if the intent really was to do some additions to this, uh, facility, and we can do it, so why not? So I, I'm always concerned. Another important issue, another important issue is the tax burden being placed on seniors. Seniors support this town. We're going to do a 55 and over, uh, polka home structure in the town. We're going to have 50, 55 and over. Those seniors pay approximately, from what I understand, about 40% of the education of our children. Because families don't pay full bill for education. They can't. If it's $20,000 to educate a child, and you have two, that's $40,000, you know that we're not paying that kind of money in our taxes. So it's got to come from somewhere, and it comes from the, uh, older, uh, age group. But, and they're willing to do that. They're willing to pay for education. They're willing to pay for bathrooms that are needed. But it becomes a burden to seniors, when we start asking them to pay for more than, than what is needed. And that, that's the big issue that comes, uh, for seniors. So, um, I don't know if you have any questions for me? I don't, hopefully I can answer all the, uh, issues surrounding my amended motion, but I hope you support that, because it's very important. We still get the bathrooms, all right, and we still, um, get the, cover the needs of the, of the community. Now, I understand the school is adamantly opposed to this, all right, but, you know, we're talking about working together. That's what we do. We work together. And sometimes we have to do things we don't want, to satisfy the need that we have to have. So, thank you very much, and if you have any questions, I mean, more than that, it's with somebody else.
Hi, Laura, Corvino, 7.
Go, go, go.
Sorry.
Okay. Wait till I volunteer. This is Holland was standing first. She was standing, yeah. Almost the whole nine minutes. I'm sorry. It was eight minutes, 59 seconds that she was standing.
I had a sprain in my back, I'm sorry. Read a moment, 29 Abbott Road, North Red. Before I say that, I want to thank the selectmen, finance, school committee, and all the committees in town, CPC, uh, all the committees in town that worked very, very hard on all the projects. Whatever, whatever your opinion is, would, whatever we talk about tonight, we need to understand the amount of time that goes into every one of the decisions that I've brought up here tonight, whether we agree with them or not. So thank you to all of you. I'm a member of the Athletics Facilities Committee that is bringing this forward, uh, and have been involved in every one of the meetings to make the decision and bring this to the focus tonight. The reason that our committee and myself is opposed to this, this proposal to make that they have suggested, as Mr. Yul has suggested, is that it was a million-dollar building that they originally built that we needed for the team rooms and everything else. I was also an original member of the turf committee, and when we designed the turf building, the turf fields, we designed it with the idea that where bathrooms would go, and where, uh, when we realized we had to take the bathrooms out, where bathrooms would go, and where the concession would go. The concession was in tough shape, and the best place to spend the least amount of money was to put the concessions, uh, take the concession stand out, because when we saw the amount of money that we committed to build a concession stand and that, especially in Parks and Park, I, Tilson and I are on there, and said the amount of money to build a concession stand is ridiculous, and down the road, some group will build it, the schools who use most of it, most of the booster groups. Uh, and at that time, you know, we would, somebody would raise money, not necessarily Recreation or school group, somebody to do it. But the idea of putting, uh, $435,000, that number has gone up, and if you look at the numbers that we've looked at so far, they've all gone up much more than 10 or 20%. They've all gone up at least 30%. So we don't really know that number. We all, we do know that two groups of engineers said they didn't agree with that number, and to take a million-dollar building that it cost and spend $400,000, we're now talking about a million, $400,000 building to put bathrooms in and lose the storage. The storage is extremely important, and that's why we decided to build it the size they did for that team room. So what it's doing is, it's overriding all ideas we put in there originally for what we needed, to save some money. So when you look at $217,000, we're not saying it's $217,000. We don't know what the number would be to do it, but we also know that there's so many risks that could happen if anybody goes in there. There is no warranty of the building now. There was a warranty on it, but we originally got that price of $435,000. But if we went in and did it, and it caused any other problems, then the original person to put in a million-dollar building is not going to back what we are doing now to add on to it. The second part of it is to put bathrooms where these, uh, as Mr. Yul is suggesting, you put them out. It'd be almost like putting a garage in front of your front door when you rearrange it, because it's supposed to be separated with a concession stand. Would be down the road if it happens, and there's no intention from Recreation at this point to come to the town and ask for money to do it. We had hoped originally, because that concession stand was in a spot that was the best spot for the bathrooms in, here in town, and at some point, we may go with a concession stand through the town, like we've done a lot of other things for pennies on the dollar, if you had to let these quotes came back in. So we definitely do not agree with this, because no matter what, if it goes, the only thing that we do know is that if we bid it out, if you spend the $50,000, you bid it out, the numbers probably would come in less. None of us really believe we're going to commit more. What you don't know, if you take a million-dollar building that was built, say, get rid of the storage, you know that at some point you're going to have to bring in storage, uh, those ugly trailers we built and put in there again, to keep the field and, uh, equipment structures in those buildings, and you know that if they make a mistake, a $500,000, $600,000 could be more to fix that million-dollar building. So we really don't think that's a very good idea. The leads are the ones that raised the money originally, that Mr. Mel Webster talked about originally, and we know that we were going to be up there, maybe we would have kept that money and built a concession stand, but because the groups did work together, and I, I have to say, just because one of us disagreed, I was the dissenting vote on that committee, but I will tell you that coming forward after $50,000, that's the position we're in. I agree with that. I agree we have to go forward and it'll be less money. I absolutely broad agree this is the right way to go, because we don't know what it's going to cost, if they go in and they make a mistake, how much money it's going to cost. It's the only safe bet today, is to go forward with what this committee is asking for, uh, the Facilities Committee, ask for the $50,000, put it up to bid, the numbers would probably be less, and we'd get it done. Absolutely. We'd never, never, never suggest putting money into a million-dollar building. Thank you.
Finance committee recommendation.
The finance committee has voted for and opposition to this amendment and to for. I think that some of the reasons why we've done this is because many of the positive things that Mr. Yul has suggested, such as access to baseball and softball fields, uh, primary beneficiaries, students, et cetera, et cetera, are all things you could equally say about a standalone building. While it is true that the plumbing for, if we were to retrofit the team building, would decrease the cost of this project substantially, it is also true that we have not received an adequate structural engineer's report to suggest what really might happen to the new team building were we to retrofit it. There has been suggestions by architects and by engineers that we would need to add additional steel in order for the building to take this kind of retrofit. Hence, the finance committee voted for and to, um, against this, uh, amendment.
Yeah. Yep. Please just turn around.
Julie Brown, Southwood Road, Town Red. First of all, I, I vote for the citizens' checklist. Is it necessary? Yes. The state has mandated you can't use your field unless you have bathrooms. I've lived in this community for over 50 years. I have four children. Education, I, I voted for the high school referendum right now. I also voted for the $15 million that they gave back in our school. I also, I was against buying this mid property for $3 million. We bought the deal of the property and let Eisenhower go, and we paid all the abuddies in Eisenhower. If you can remember, we had water studies after water study. We wasted so much money. I can imagine that, it's not education, it's athletics. It, it is for the few in the high school and junior high school, and I'm not against it. I want kids out exercising in the sunshine, but you can add on to a building. I added on when I finally increased. I had a game. I had four children. I had a game, I had four children, I built an addition. You can't tell me that structurally, you can't add on. Never mind explode it or overload it. You can't tell me that you can't physically add on to that building. So, I would be all in favor of this at all. Thank you.
Just to look, we're not talking about adding on. We're talking about going in and jackhammering the existing building. If you built a house, you're not going to go in two years later with jackhammers and tear up everything and start over again. And that's what we're talking about here. The only thing I do want to point out is this is a school and a town project. That's on town land. It's not a school project. That facility gets used almost every day of the week from the end of March until the end of October. And there are youth football, youth lacrosse, there's field hockey, there's graduation, there's Relay for Life, there's high school lacrosse, boys and girls, there's high school soccer, boys and girls, there's high school football, there's JV soccer, JV lacrosse. That thing gets used all the time. We're not talking about adding on. We're talking about going in and tearing apart an existing building. Our architects have said, there's no guarantee that once they get in there that something bad isn't going to happen. That's on time.
But I still say that there has to be a way. A jackhammering, trying to add it on to, we have all the empty structure there.
There's no space.
Why?
Mr. Webster, wait to be recognized and then please go to the microphone. There's no space there. It's built into the slope coming down from where the new all-purpose field is. There's no space to add on there. That's why we got this engineering firm last year. That's why we put it up to bid to find where the engineering firm to come in and say, where's the best location? They never recommended putting an addition or tearing up things as we do.
Well, then, I think the storage, there has to be storage in this anonymous building in some way, shape, or form. There are beautiful athletic equipment. And I'm not against that. And I mean, I was all for the turf field. Is that still here? That they put in from Hillview? I just find that the taxes in North Red, you should be getting your back. We have how many acres of Smith property? We paid him to take the bridges back. We have plans that you will not allow people in this town to pop on the street and walk through. I just find it's a waste of money to go and spend this type of money and post the agreement. Fire station, eighteen million dollars. You people can spend eighteen million dollars. Very, very expensive.
You want to speak? Yes. Just a long, a little longer.
Thank you. Josh, I have eighteen minutes. Maybe it's just me, but I'm a little confused at what's happening here. The amendment was, it put a specific dollar amount of fifty thousand dollars. I'm a...
Mr. Webster, I think I can clear it up real quick. The difference is not the dollars. The difference is not the project per se. Other than, this amendment specifies that these bathrooms will go into the existing team building, not a new structure. So, it is limiting its scope what they can do. It's fifty thousand dollars either way. But do you want to limit it to the team building and only the team building?
So, if this approach is taken, then the concession stand would change. It is, you wouldn't have to do anything with the concession stand. And I guess the other thing is, I haven't heard anything about other than a lot of our people having to take it. Got inside or something. And it was mentioned about steel limitations. Nobody has said anything about possibly putting a second floor. I realize there is a mandate put from power, but put something be done on top. And then the other thing is, if we're going to have to do this, it would, why my decision, if the new building, if this wasn't down in the new building, was put up, would it just be a mirror image of this old education society that was already done? Just technically. I was hoping to get a little bit more information on what was going to be torn down, what was going to be put up. And also, if it was going to be modified, a little bit more detail on the limitations. I just feel kind of limited with the information I have to go with this.
Mr. Webster?
So, to address the concession stand, the concession stand is extremely limited right now. I think that's the best way to put it, Parks and Rec. It doesn't have a sink. It doesn't have running water. The health inspector is letting us do some things, but there's a lot of things we can't do there anymore. The new health inspector, the building is in pretty rough shape. There is a lot of holes from the ground that sometimes little animals can come out. It's just not, the building needs to be torn down. It's not something you can replace, or it needs to have a foundation put on it, which would be costly. So, that building can still be used, but you can't cook there. And we have to somehow get water there. That's the status of the concession stand. In terms of putting a second floor on, I don't think that's been discussed, but I also don't think that that's possible, especially for handicapped access. We'd have to have an elevator. That's going to put your costs way, way out of whack. In terms of, it's a completely different building. We're talking about a prefab block structure building that was brought into the site in three pieces, I believe, and then put together. It has all the fixtures in it, everything's there. And then they basically put it on the pad, and they tie it all into the water and the electricity, et cetera. It's a lot smaller than the current team room building is right now.
Man. I agree.
We have to follow this door over. I have concerns. A, the cost. B, Stanford ban. I'm a former band member and a former member of the Usters. The concession stand is what we rely on. Sports, 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 amateur play, and the field to have the locker rooms. The music Usters need that concession stand to make money for the kids to play the music. So, to me, I'm very passionate about this. With all due respect to Rita, someday we'll put the concession stand back. In the meantime, that's our fundraiser. So, I'm very passionate about the concession stand being there. So, if we went for affordable rooms and saved some money, we could put some money into the Snatch Shack and fix it up and make it a little better. So, I mean, that's just my passion at being a lockout. And scaling the music kids to get the short end of the deal all the time.
Tom Mannion, Forty West and Starcom. First off, my sons don't even go to the high school. They've lived here for nineteen years, but I believe in sports, I believe in the students. We haven't talked about the adverse effect on the students with what you're recommending because you're getting rid of the locker rooms. Now, the kids have to get dressed up in the high school, walk all the way down, walk all the way back and down. Because then the rules wouldn't stay the same.
But that's Mr. Yule. Everyone in the hall, please do not go to the microphone unless... Otherwise, we have a dialogue and I'm not in control. Mr. Yule, if you want to respond to the question.
Thank you, Mr. Mannion. No, we're not talking about eliminating the locker rooms. The locker rooms would be, would remain. We're talking about remodeling the structure so that it would include access to bathrooms, not to the locker room, obviously. That would be completely separate. But to allow the bathrooms to be added to that structure. So, we're not talking about eliminating locker rooms.
And what about the storage? Will we lose the storage?
Well, I don't see that, I don't see that in the information I have, but they had...
That's a special, I heard. We'll lose the storage. Now, you're talking about...
Mr. Yule? It's a separate question. So, wait to be recognized. Mr. Webster seems to know the answer. We will lose every inch of storage we have under this proposal.
So, there's a lot of equipment. So, the kids are going to have to bring that up and back from the high school where we store. That seems like an awful lot of that.
This is Yule.
I read, I read Yule, four twenty-seven Park Street. I don't, I went to look at the building today after I worked in this building. I love this building. The kids love the building. So, I went to look at the team building after work today. And I know that, we can use that slide for a second. That slide is actually after the proposed standalone bathrooms. And in the front on the left is the old Snatch Shack. Correct?
Mr. Webster?
No, that goes exactly where the Snatch Shack. The Snatch Shack is torn down, so that's kind of where this up front is. That's pavement up front.
The pavement would be for a future Snatch Shack.
No, the pavement is pavement. It's not for anything.
Okay. But if you could use that design for a second, let's pretend that on the right side, that's the current team room, team building. Then, on the backside of that team building, it's all one brick wall. There's no doorway to nothing. So, couldn't we, I know you said we can't add on to the back because there's a hill there. But I have to remind everybody in this room, this building was built into a huge hill. So, we certainly could add on five female bathrooms. No, eight women's bathrooms, five men's, and maybe even one for transgender there. I think there'd be room to add on to that without wasting any storage, without changing the inside of the existing building at all. But we could build at the back. And I looked at it this afternoon, and it seems to me there'd be plenty of space. So, I'm not sure why your architects or builders said they have to tear down everything unless they wanted to make it a little bit more dramatic. I don't believe you have to break down any walls.
Down in the front over here, and then down in the front over here, and then to this gentleman in the classroom, down in the front over here.
I am dying. Do we die? I appreciate what Mr. Yule is trying to do because we all know that our tax rate is unbearable and that you cannot get blood out of a stone. I know because I've tried. As Mr. Webster has pointed out, perhaps there is a small solution. It's obvious other methods are used properly. So, why not split the difference and split it down the middle? School department being responsible for one half, and the town the other half. It's a thought. I have a couple of questions about the proposal. In the paper, it said it was six hundred and twenty-four square feet a week. Jumping back and forth, or is that inappropriate to be doing right now?
Mr. Yule?
Yes. My proposal does not do act with their potential.
Right.
My proposal just simply has to do with the locker rooms as that.
So, okay. So, will there be discussion too of the initial proposal?
The initial proposal.
Right now, we're talking about the amendment, which is to limit, limit the scope. So, we're going, and then when we vote, we will vote on the amendment first, and then that will go up or down, and that will take us to the main motion.
Will there be a rebuttal debate? Ask for the original proposal?
Once we dispense with the amendment. So, right now, the discussion is focused on limiting the scope to the team building alone. Sir?
Don Miller, Six Asher Drive. I only know, before I came into this meeting, what I read in the paper. And I guess after seeing Yule's presentation, I'm equally aghast at his numbers. Why is it so expensive? I looked in the paper, and we are installing eighteen stalls, which I guess is now going down. But it's six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Even at that, it was over thirty-six thousand a stall. When you go by square feet, at six hundred and twenty-four square feet, that's over a thousand dollars per square foot for new construction. As anybody that's been in the construction business knows, even new home costs are in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty, maybe two hundred at the most, dollars per square foot. There is a house for sale at Ten Hickory Lane that's going for six hundred and twenty-five thousand. It has two thousand square feet of space, plus a pool, plus a deck, plus full house air conditioning. And that is in the neighborhood of a hundred and sixty dollars per square foot. I don't understand with either of these proposals why it is so expensive to install a half eighteen, sixteen, thirteen, eight plus two, whatever the number is, stalls with a roof over it. And I realize there's plumbing. I realize there's a septic system that has to be done, but that has to be done in new houses too. So, why are these costs like ten times what it would cost in the commercial world to do this job?
Mr. McGrath? Into both microphones. What are you watching?
Ed McGrath, Eight Laurel Road. Three short questions and short answers. Are there restrooms in the team building? What, we say it's for storage. Can we, what storage? Is it track hurdles? Is it football equipment, whatever? And then, the last question is, the square footage for what the state is requiring us to do, is that team building big enough? Is there enough square footage to meet the mandate to be compliant with the state?
Mr. Webster? One, from everything we've seen, there is enough space in the team room to do that. I do want to make clear that we have had no plans or no design for the team room. This four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar price was an incredibly early estimate. There has been no planning done at all for the team. So, I just want to make that clear. In terms of, what were your two questions? Oh, storage. Storage is all the track equipment, the two golf carts, football equipment, whatever sports are played on that turf field, they're stored in that. And we don't have enough storage. There's restrooms in that building for the team. There's one for the referees room. I believe there's two or three for each team. I believe there's two or three for each team room. We asked if we could use those for the public and we were told absolutely not.
Mr. Tilton.
Marty Tilton, 6 Sylvia Road. I'm also the park director in town. And I was on the, I'm on the athletic fields committee. What you really, what you don't realize, like Mel said, we didn't really initiate the, getting into doing the team room because it was, kind of thought that that wouldn't be in, uh, we wouldn't be able in a feasible direction to go into. So now, if we started that, you're talking even more money to even get that where we are now with the designs to get it out to bid. So we're talking $50,000 that we're asking for to get it to the, through the bid process. But if we go in that direction, we're starting over. Because they haven't really done any investigation, except for minor little, you know, references. They didn't really get into investigating doing the team room. There's a lot of issues in the team room. People asking, why don't you add on? Why aren't you going back? Well, on top of the team room, there's utilities on top of that. Behind it, you have all the infrastructure for all the drainage that comes down through the school. And in front of it, is a infrastructure in the ground for the drainage of the fields and the team room. So that, it's really not an option to go that way. Just a thought you guys like to know.
Mr. Yule.
As I understand it, our amendment is to spend $50,000 and kind of hamstring the committee that's done a lot of work. And, and the, I've always done very good work. And I think it's ridiculous to do that. And so I move to the question.
Up there in the back. Unfortunately, if you speak perv, you can't say I'm going to the question. And that person who has the microphone and says, man, up in the back.
Move the question.
Motion to move to the question? Is it on the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
I want to make it clear that if you vote to approve this, there's about a 0% chance that the school committee and the school department is going to approve this. And the building is not in control. So you'll be approving $50,000 to have nothing done.
I'm, I'm going to give Mr. Yule a minute. Because when I said, is it to the motion, I meant the motion to move to the question. Mr. Yule, I'm going to give you a minute. And then there'll be no more discussion. We're going to vote on the amendment.
Okay, we're not a fork in the road like that. The question is, are we going to go down the path of spending $652,000 on a project that we could have for $435,000? That's really the path that we're going down. Now, they haven't done any study on the current structure. So they don't really know whether the numbers are going to go up, down, or sideways. They do not know that at this time. So your decision right now is to fork in the road or you're going to base it. Eventually, on project 652,000, or you're going to have them concentrate on a lower cost project so that they can move forward for that project. Thank you.
We are, we are now moving to vote on moving to the question. If this passes, we're going to vote on the amendment. If fails, we'll continue the discussion. On moving to the question, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
What's your gap? On the amendment. So this amendment is to restrict the main motion to the existing team building and new storage structure at the Alfred J. Kennedy Field. Same amount of money. Similar project, but restricts it to that one structure. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. The, the, sorry. The no carries. So the motion carries. No time for a break, huh? On the main, on the main motion. On the main motion. On the main motion.
Don Calathor, 3 St. Spur Lane. On the main motion, um, finance would be devoted 42 in favor. I struggle with this because I'm really troubled with the cost of it. But having looked at the, the number of bathrooms or facilities in each, each bathroom, I'm not so sure there's, there's room for cutting out the, um, selectmen have assured us that they're going to work with Representative Jones and Rooster to see if there is any way we can bring the cost of this down. The $635,000, I think is just a outrageous sum of money to have to spend on bathrooms. We, we have to do something. We're required to provide bathroom facilities at the field. We have to do something. But I would like, I, I, I welcome their decision to take the time over the next couple of weeks to see if they can get any relief from the state on the size and the scope of this building. It seems to be an overkill. Any of us that have gone to a sporting event or to a theater event knows that the one thing you do is you wait in line for the restaurant facilities. It's, it's, it's a fact of life. We can't build for the maximum crowd that's going to be there. And this facility isn't open every weekend with the stadium, uh, seats filled with people. So it, it seems like we're, we're, we're being required to do a heck of a lot more than we ought to have to do here. And if the selectmen and the county administrator, through our elected representatives, the state, the state government, can get some additional relief from the size of this building, bring the cost down, I think that'd be great. So I, I have one for it. But because I have confidence that they're going to move forward and try to mitigate this cost as best they can. It's just too much money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, to Mr. Calathor's point. And earlier, some other comments from my committee and other members of the club in relation to the concern as to what we need to do now and what's being required of us. We spoke to Representative Jones earlier. And again, we appreciate his hard commitment and assistance in getting this facility looking at again by the state. And we're committed to moving it ahead over the next couple of weeks before we go into this destruction. And just to again reiterate, originally, we've applied 26 fixtures in here. The state has already agreed to cut that down to 13, cut it in half. I don't want to get any spooks up. And if we don't ask, we don't receive. Representative's commitment, the board's commitment to move forward and request again, the state coming towards a position to believe we can do so. I just want to say that we're committed to doing it. To this gentleman's point over here, we prefer, of course, for a square foot. It's extraordinary. Aye. Which is one of the very reasons why we're coming forward tonight for, uh, to get some of the money, set it up to bid, to see what really is going to cost us. Uh, we believe that what's being proposed is a facility that will address the needs, the long-term needs of the facility and the school department as well as the community as a whole. Uh, and we believe that the essence that we're looking for is truly deserving. And we were hoping to get, move on to it. But true or never, we come back to the June town lead. We're, we're quest for appropriation for the facility. It was really that. So we appreciate your comments. Keep in mind, the candidates are spending days, weeks. Much of the candidates are all active areas too. And I'm equally concerned as anybody else on the end of this that it's possible. It's extraordinary. So we're committed to getting a, a real price on the structure as proposed. But we might need to get the plans to a final stage. And that's what we're looking to see. So we appreciate your support.
Mr. Nettie.
Attorney Nettie, Athletic Facilities Committee, and Vice Chairman, State Committee. Again, I echo what Steve said and I support Mr. Calathor of the State Committee and Athletic Facilities Committee in restoring refuel fixtures and maybe being able to downsize the size of this building and reduce the cost. I just want to remind everybody what you're voting for tonight is the money to go forward with the bid documents. If the price goes back too high and we come to you in June and you feel that it's too much money, you may have to vote against it at that point in time. But until we roll through the bid documents and exactly the prices for the modern building, the cost is highly well up there. Just like to acknowledge Cliff's office. This is the last meeting as a member of the school committee. Uh, Cliff has been on the school committee for nine years. This year, he's the chairman. He's also been a member of the secondary school building committee for eight years. So I just want to take this opportunity to thank Cliff for the service he's done.
Thank you.
I don't even go that far, though. Sarah.
I, I just have a very.
I don't want to shout out.
Just have a very quick question. Oh, I only know what I read in the newspaper. About $50,000 that has been spent. Basically did not come up with a plan that could go out to bid. So I would like to ask whoever has been dealing with this engineering firm, um, first of all, why? Uh, we didn't make that progress? And second, what gives them confidence that another $50,000 is going to get us there?
Mr. Webster.
$50,000 was for the original planning. And to come up with all the options that did not include getting to the bid. We, we have plans now that are not spec ready for bidding. And that's what the additional money is for.
Yeah.
I, I, I just want to finish. The $50,000 is going to have to be spent regardless of, if we went with Mr. Yule's plan and we came tonight and asked for $650,000, the $50,000 is part of that number. And, and I want to point out, none of these numbers are in solid stone right now. And the number for the, for the other project was an early number. So that's why we want to go out to bid to get a real number.
Over here in the, in the white, uh, white spot. If I could ask, if there's three, four people standing, if you could come down to the front, I'll call on you one at a time. Clearly, it's technical difficult. Someone from Sprint, hurry. Yeah, move after Michael.
Marty Johnson, 9 Ostrich Way. I've been involved with RFP development in the past for my business. And I'm just wondering if it's possible that this $50,000 be used for a very widespread RFP? I, I heard that there was some thoughts about using the old building. But for some reason, there might have been more steel needed. There might, we never were given any concrete facts as to why that wasn't possible. And I'm just wondering, I'm not opposed to a new building. I would like to save money if we can use the old building. I also really agree with Mrs. Gonzalez that it's short sighted, whatever we do. If we don't include some kind of a platform for a future concession stand, we're going to be back here again in a few years. So then this RFP go out asking for proposals to look at, putting in bathrooms and possibly a footing for future development of a barn type structure concessions, including looking at the existing structures or new buildings of somehow making this RFP a more global RFP.
To the question, Mr. Rowley? Specifically to the question, the RFP will, the design plan will include some add-on options, including the footings and slabs which would allow for future expansion of this site for a potential concession stand. But in the moment, it's the dotted concession stand. So as an add-on, placing the footings and the slab will allow later, and the infrastructure for the plumbing for the building will allow for connection should the concession stand be added on at minimal cost. So that's going to be included in that, similarly. Additionally, it may be, we have, this is in the concession stages with the architect, uh, may be able to include some sort of a second add-on as to whatever cost to put a structure on for the concession stand. But it's not under $650,000, the initial estimate that we have. Or we'll put that in this so that maybe we can get the, get an idea as to what the market place would commit at doing it all at once. And we'll have those answers for you for June town lead.
Will the RFP open soon?
No. No, that is not the issue. Because the design plans is to where the rest is only allowed for this new structure. Again, we looked at about seven different ideas, which is what a lot of the money was spent. A lot of the $50,000 was to do early design stages on different, uh, different structures and different locations. And then, because it would be Athletic Facilities Subcommittee consultation with the school department, the immigration department, and everybody else. So this is how we hold on to this proposal. So the proposal that's going to be put up with will be for this structure and this location in the current concession stand is located. With an add-on, the figure that we have in bid is for private, the figure is going to be over $25,000 and add the slab and the foundation for additional structure. But that will be an add-on to the bid structure. Thank you, Mr. Rowley. Yeah.
Linda Lally. Linda Lally, 18 Southwood Grove. I'm a little confused as to just what we're voting on tonight. In his original presentation, Selecton Larry said the firm figures would be brought to us in June. But this article, as printed in the warrant, says money to fund the design, construction, reconstruction, or remodeling of the facilities. That to me sounds like a blank check. What are we voting on tonight?
Just, I, I'll clarify that. The motion specifically states only this. Yes, the article is written in a way that they could have brought the entire project cost forward. But the motion stipulates within the forecourt is the article. This is $50,000 to prepare the detailed bid documents and specs. So they can get true cost for June. Well, yes. Now, I, and before we take the vote, I will leave the motion. So you're all certain of voting. Thank you. Sarah.
Matt Rodeo, 28 Gabriel Street. I do have to agree. I was just wondering to the point of why we're not looking at also add-on to the snack shack? Um, as Mr. Webster had said, a small building is very expensive to build. So why are we kicking this down the, down to the future? Why are we looking to do this now? Also, has there been any thought of using funds instead of borrowing? Taking some of the windfall of 16 to 18 million dollars that we're going to get for the sale? Why are we taking a million dollars and using that to do this? Thank you.
Mr. Rowley.
We'll start with the end. We haven't got the money yet. The, the, the first step was tonight was to rezone the property so that multi could move forward. The selectmen the other night signed the purchase and sales agreement. We don't anticipate the cash windfall for quite some time. Again, that money is the funniest part to find out if it will be available for long structures, like over 20 years. It is not necessary. So when you get it from a timeline standpoint, So when we get it from a timeline standpoint, that's still up in the interrelation to when this was going to come around. To your point, relation to the late idea, we believe at this point in time, we can get the architect to include within the appropriation they were looking for, some add-on features which will give us a better idea, if not final figures, as to whatever cost to put this actually stand on as an add-on to the proposal. And if it's a problem, yeah, the selectmen was very concerned, as well as the athletic subcommittee. We have really never taken a town meeting with these property proposals. And that's what the house calls us. I'm asking six hundred fifty thousand or more, the little structure that we're on is going to cost. So we're asking for, as long as only as, to get us to a point where we know exactly when we can close the town meeting in June, and the exact dollar per, once we go out to bid. So we are looking at the phase again on it, looking at the whole picture.
This is Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Marcy Bailey, twenty-one ninety-five. Obviously, we need to move forward with this, as it's required by the state, and we need to continue to use our wonderful turf field. I heard what Mr. Burrier said regarding the snack shack, and also heard what Mrs. Johnson and Mrs. Gonzalez said, and I would like to add to what they said. I would like to challenge the athletics subcommittee to look at a year-term permanent solution for the snack shack. Is the amount of years this money for the music boosters and catalysts, other organizations, it gives our turf field an entire complex, the people who come to such turf fields as state-of-the-art high schools come to respect? A food truck is nice, but a middle schooler coming on a Friday night to a football game is not going to buy a ten or fifteen dollar sandwich. They want a one dollar Snickers bar. And that one dollar Snickers bar keeps the middle schooler safe and entertained all evening, and helps the music boosters raise money. It's really part of what we need to do for our town, for our students, for our recreation department, to host track meets or other events. And I think it's short-sighted to punt it down the line. So the way the athletics subcommittee brought parties together to fund irrigation for the secondary field, they should be working now on the location and bringing parties together, and having this snack shack that works for the whole community soon around the winter. Thank you.
Are there microphones back there? We could try them, but... Move to the question. Are those in favor of moving to the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The main question, this is to appropriate fifty thousand dollars from free cash at a continued design facilities at the J. Kennedy Field, including but not limited to public restroom rooms, including any costs incidental or related thereto, and that the board of selectmen is authorized to take any other action necessary to carry out this project as specified in Article Five, as printed in the law. That is the motion we are voting on. Are those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Article Six. Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Article Six, to amend zoning bylaws, prohibited uses recreational marijuana establishments. I move to amend the code of the town of North Reading zoning bylaws by adding to Article Eight a new section immediately prior to Section two hundred dash thirty-seven as follows: Section two hundred dash thirty-six dot on prohibited uses as printed in as specified in Article Six as printed in the law.
We have the motion, this board of selectmen just to make a recommendation, Mr. Yule.
Board of selectmen unanimously recommends.
Does the findings committee just to make a recommendation? Ms. Oliver.
The findings committee recommends.
For the C P C, Mr. Pierce.
The committee's plan and condition of recommendation will be three D two.
Mr. Yule.
Yes, the purpose of this article is to prohibit the sale of recreational marijuana in the town of North Reading. It's basically, it applies to brick-and-mortar type establishments. So again, it is to prohibit the sale of recreational marijuana. It does not have anything to do with medical marijuana, that's the definition, as determined by the state. And it doesn't mean that, doesn't, if people, it has nothing to do with people using marijuana in the town. It all has to do simply with the sale of recreational marijuana. Thank you.
Further discussion? If you'd like to speak, if you can, down to the front.
Can you hear me?
No, we cannot do that. So there.
Mariandis, Eric Seven Eisenhower. I'm just wondering if our neighboring towns are also, if they have some similar policies, or if whatever goals we have with this motion could be forwarded to neighboring towns and set up a community, a dispensary somewhere near our town border?
Mr. Yule.
Yes, we can only be responsible within the boundaries of our town. Other towns may pass. I know, I believe it was Westwood I just read, had passed a law that says not to allow recreational marijuana. That's the only one that I know of at this time.
Sir?
I'm Miller, six Ashland again. I hope everybody took a chance to read the article that was in the transcript on February sixteenth by Michelle Bearden, who is a pediatric psychologist and was associated with Mass General Hospital, showing the dangers of recreational marijuana. I will, in time wise, I don't want to read it now, but she was very explicit, a very knowledgeable person, and gave a lot of insight that I didn't have, even though I read a lot of stuff on the internet about it. So I'm hoping that we will vote in favor of the motion which will deny the sale of recreational marijuana in North Reading. To those who point to the age restrictions, I would just like to point out that what are the age restrictions on cigarettes right now? It's eighteen, I understand. There's motions at the state level to move it to twenty-one, but right now it's eighteen. Tell me you haven't ever seen a high school kid smoking a cigarette. The age restrictions get overcome irregardless. So let's vote in favor of this motion to prohibit the sale of recreational marijuana in North Reading.
Sir?
Fran Hatchin, seven hundred and eighty. My concern is not over whether the benefits of smoking marijuana, group that and different. I'm concerned whether this article puts the town in compliance with the latest mandate that the Commonwealth has voted on last fall. I'm looking to see whether we are putting ourselves into a equal situation that may be serving oxygen.
Mr. Klein, Town Council.
Darren Klein, through the moderator for K P Law Town Council. Part of the ballot initiative allows towns to essentially adopt local prohibitions. The attorney general has recommended that in order to do that, this should be both through a zoning bylaw amendment, which is what you're voting on tonight, as well as a subsequent ballot vote, which my understanding is you'll have the opportunity to vote on at the next election. That was in the local ballot initiative of the past.
Sir?
Thomas Davidson, sixteen, Robles Street. I see no positive impact of this.
I'm sorry, you need to step up, step into the microphone.
Can you hear me now? Okay, all right. So, A, if anybody's looking for it, they can go over to a different town, and then that town gets the revenue, that town gets the tax dollars that they're going to spend on it, regardless of whether or not they purchased it. This town or that town, it's going to be very just, this just does not seem to be, it seems to be counterproductive. Secondly, because of the health benefits and the health, you know, attributes to chill here and, 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 this is a whole, like alcohol, it's a way worse than marijuana. It's, I don't think that that should be a reason to hit the sale in our town. We have several establishments that allow people to burn up until it's all very, you know, and more, and, you know, then they're going to drive home. It doesn't make sense, and it's not a good argument to me, that the health benefits outweigh the freedom of being able to sell something. Thank you.
I'm Dante Sutter, Ashford Drive. And I have two things for people to think about, and I'm pretty unsure myself on this vote. One, we keep talking we want commercial development, and every time somebody wants to bring in commercial development, we say no. We reacted that way to, oh, you say job lot, now we're saying about this. Secondly, I'm also a pediatric psychologist, and I recently went to an AME training on this subject, and it's really important that we recognize marijuana is dangerous to developing brains up to age twenty-six. After age twenty-six, the data are different. So the current laws I know look at eighteen, look at twenty-one. We should at least make whatever decision we're making based on an understanding of the scientific data on developing brains, and not based on an old-fashioned reprimand this argument. Marijuana is safe to people over twenty-six. Eighteen, twenty-one are not meaningful cutoffs, and we should think about that and educate our children regardless of whether we sell it in town or outside of town. Thank you.
Shane Cumming, Lindor Road. The town of North Reading citizens barely voted for recreational marijuana in its plethora of golden opportunities in November of two thousand sixteen. Recreational marijuana establishments had been a major topic covered by the media and broadcasters, and nay vote to Article Six of Men Code is a principle and fundamental truth to protect the town of North Reading citizens who waited and wanted their entire lives to cast their official vote, which was yes to recreational marijuana entitlements. The voters had a fair opportunity to decide. The polls were open early in advance of the presidential election voting day, making an effort on behalf of every voter who said they would try the best deal for our community, economy, and taxpayers. Headline, February twelfth, two thousand fifteen, money dot C N N dot com, recreational pot delivers fifty-three million in tax revenue to Colorado. Headline, February sixteen, twenty sixteen, reason dot com, legal marijuana sales total one billion in Colorado last year. There are no limits to the possibilities of cannabisness, to the help and protection it can bring. We voted for it to bring this great town of North Reading stronger infrastructure, better care, corporate tax reform, and lowering rates. This will result in prosperity and confidence with discretionary spending available to the town and its people. We will sustain and get a lot better. We will be able to pay for what we want to do. Voting nay will bring money to the treasury, create growth, jobs, and eliminate deficit. I expect votes to count and be upheld. Call for revote is unfair, unnecessary, and injustice. North Reading wants recreational marijuana establishments. Please protect the voters by saying nay to this Article Six of Men Code. Thank you.
Yes, just want to clarify, the town of North Reading voted fifty-four percent against recreational marijuana. Also, the town of Lynnfield and Reading could go through the same process that we are going through right now. Thank you.
I'm Andy Schultz, four Central Street. I'll pull things. Both municipal and recreational marijuana is still a legal federal, and we have the attorney general, Washington, who's already empowered to shut down recreational marijuana facilities. Secondarily, I always hear about the revenue, the revenue, the revenue. What is the drain on our police department that's going to have to enforce this? Unlike alcohol, with the police department have a breathalyzer, how are we going to legislate, how are we going to enforce operating in the name of the influence of marijuana? There's no breathalyzer that's going to tell somebody if they're prepared or not. What's the social cost of this? Is this what we want in our town? I recently finished my term as the president of the Reading, North Reading Chamber of Commerce. No one but myself, no one more than myself has tried to get commercial business to come into North Reading. I don't think a recreational marijuana shop is the look we want for trying to encourage commercial business. And that's not what I think when I think of trying to expand the commercial tax base.
Hi, everybody. My name's Amy Luckwoods, I'm the director of youth services, and I also oversee our town's youth prevention coalition. So this coalition is currently being funded by a federal grant that we were lucky enough to receive last fall. And we are targeting two specific drugs, one being marijuana, and the second being prescription drugs. Couple of things I just want to point out. The first is that our opposition is related to access from young people. The other thing is that you should know there was question about our other towns moving forward with this. Most towns who have an active coalition, ours being one of them, Wakefield, Infield, Redding, you mentioned, are all actively seeking a zoning outlawing this, a zoning prohibition. So I just want to clarify that, that is a trend going across state Massachusetts.
Sir, thank you for your recognition.
I'm Phil Haley, one ten Wall Road. Yeah, it's actually, just to remind everyone, this isn't, this isn't, I guess, this is only for the zoning bylaw, this isn't repealing anything that the tax, or the taxpayers or voters are voting on for recreational marijuana throughout the state. I thought it was fifty-two percent, forty-eight, it's fifty-four? Fifty-four in the opposition? Also, another thing to consider, you can't saw people from growing their own, I believe in six plans per person, and throughout the state. So that's another thing, too. So you're not really going, the only thing this does is ensure that you're not going to have that revenue. And I understand the social cost, which, that kind of, I don't know, that all is kind of a wayside for who's thinking of the children, which is always on weird, deaf ears, and just another kind of prattling on, not taking adult responsibility for something you would like to either do as an adult, or just like to take advantage of from a taxman perspective. And I don't know, if people are going to get it from neighboring towns, anywhere else, if you want to take advantage of it, go for it. I have to have more scruples about it, I don't know what to tell you on moralist, so we'll see what you can do with that. But, yeah, do what you gotta do. Thank you.
I'm going to be yelled at, they're right here in the hall, they're not at all? You want to see one, do you? Rush, drink, I, let's move to question. Nah, you could have shot. Not telling them I'm arguing in the neighborhood, right? I'll move to the question, are those in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now on the main motion, this is a zoning. Stay with me. This far is a two-thirds vote, this one article provides a two-thirds vote. If I need to, I'll do a handout. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Aye.
I'm going to go for the handout. So my tellers could please step forward. This is to amend, oh, this is to prohibit the sale of recreational marijuana. This prohibits only recreational marijuana being sold in the town border. All those in favor, put your hands. Four sets. Turn the harp on for the elderly, the writing by the elderly. Mr. Seri.
Before I read this motion close our meeting, I would like to thank everybody that came in this evening, so that the doctor, the pastor, the very important idols, and I also like to thank all the boards and committees that worked so hard to make this possible.
Moderator, I move to adjourn this meeting. We have the motion to adjourn. Discussion saying, now all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. You're unanimous. Have a great evening, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be up for tomorrow.